We're all pretty much socially distanced at the table, so I'm going to remove my mask and call a meeting of the Westmoreland City Council to order for March the 18th, 2021, at 6:00 PM. And Councilman Brown is going to handle our devotion for us.
Absolutely. Let's bow our heads, prayer. Our Father in heaven, we just thank you, Father, for this opportunity tonight. We thank you, Father, for the leaders of this town, Father, to come together to make the best decisions, Father. We pray that you would just ordain us, Father, to just give us wisdom and peace, that we make the right decisions, Father, for our town, for the growth and the opportunities, Father, for our citizens. We ask, Father, that you'll bless us, watch over and protect those in need. And we pray, Father, for forgiveness of our sins. These things we ask in Jesus' name. Amen.
You please stand for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Ms. Keisha, if you will call for roll call, please.
Doug Brown?
Here.
Felicia Head?
Present.
David Lee?
Here.
Brian Smalling?
Here.
Chandler Wilkerson?
Jared Kirkman?
Here. Let the record reflect that we have everyone present. Mr. Bradley is joining us by Zoom on the call. And we will say that this is a hybrid meeting where part of us are in-house and part of us are not. They're taking place by Zoom. I think it's executive order, what is it, John 78?
I'm not sure what it is, but there is one.
Yeah, it was 71, and it got moved up. I can't keep up with them anymore. But we are operating under the governor's executive order that allows for Zoom calls during the pandemic. So with that, we will move to adopt an agenda.
I'm back to motion to adopt the agenda. It's cream.
Second. We have a motion by our Vice Mayor and Councilman Brown as a second to adopt the agenda. Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor, please say aye. Aye.
Aye.
Aye.
Aye.
Let the record reflect that it passes unanimously. Next item on the agenda is the minutes, or excuse me. Do we have anyone that's either on the Zoom call or in-house that wants to speak to any of the items on the agenda for public comments? Ms. Keisha, do you have any emails or?
No, sir.
Okay.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, ma'am. Yes, sir.
If I could point, if I could point something out, we still have to have a roll call vote on every vote. There is no way we're going to watch this meeting without anybody votes but you and Mr. Brown, because y'all know what do we see. So we gotta have a roll call at each one.
Okay, very good. Next item is the minutes for the January 21 meeting.
I make a motion that we adopt the Westmoreland City Council minutes from January 21, 2021.
A second.
Have a motion by Councilman Brown, a second by Councilwoman Head to accept the minutes as written. We're open for discussion. Hearing none. If you will call the? Call.
Wilkerson?
Yes.
Smalling?
Yes.
Lee?
Yes.
Head?
Yes.
Brown?
Yes.
Let the record reflect that the motion carries unanimously. Next item is the minutes from the March 11, 2021 special call meeting.
I make the motion to approve.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve the minutes of the special call meeting from 3/21. I might also ask if that motion was by Councilman Smalling and a second by Councilman Lee. If you would, when you make the motion, please go ahead and state your name, and that way it'll be on the record for everyone here. We're open for discussion.
I don't have it.
I don't know if it makes a difference or not, but on the last minutes that we had, the actual January minutes, we mentioned in the roll call that David Lee and myself were present via Zoom on the special call meeting. There's no language that speaks to that. I don't think, I don't know if that matters, but just wanted to point that out.
Okay, we can do that addition. Do that. Ms. Head, you need more time?
No, sir, we're good.
Okay. If you will call for roll, please.
Brown?
Yes.
Head?
Yes.
Lee?
Yes.
Smalling?
Yes.
Wilkerson?
Yes.
The motion carries unanimously. The next item is the January 21 financial statement.
Mr. Mayor, David Lee, I'll make the motion to accept the financial statement for January.
Thank you, Councilman Lee. Do we have a second?
Councilman Smalling, I'll second the motion.
Have a second by Councilman Smalling. We are open for discussion.
I've got a question about the January financial statement. The $36,515 that was the coronavirus relief fund, CRF, from the state, it mentioned that you're breaking it out and paying it back toward the unexpected expenses that were not budgeted last year. What is that, what does that kind of, what does that look like when you have to break that out? Where does it go to?
It'll go back through those, like expense items, like the salary, or like where we pay people for being off for 10 days at an expected salary, the cleaning for the public works. So that's going to be under the building and that sort of thing.
Okay.
But when I get all those numbers calculated in the amounts, I'll let y'all know instead of just updating on here.
All right, thanks, Keisha.
I would like to speak. Felicia Head, I would like to draw everybody's attention to line order 947. As you see, we was budgeted $35,000 for the whole fiscal year. And I added up our new pump that has just recently went out.
You're bringing the water fund or silver?
In silver.
What page?
The last page, sir. Line 947.
Page eight.
947.
It was budgeted for the whole fiscal year at $35,000. As you see, we've already spent $65,588.85. So we just got bought a new pump. If you add that together, I just want that everybody go look that we're already $93,588.85 in the hole.
Okay, and Ms. Head is referring basically to an item that's on the agenda later down tonight. As this statement in January, we were 65, like she said, 60, we're at $65,588. And then when we get to the February meeting, we'll look at, or the February financial statement, we'll be looking at those in addition. Plus, there's an item on the agenda tonight to purchase another pump, so. So I think we'll probably have a lot of discussion before this night is over about pumps. Other items. I had a couple of questions about things, but Keisha's already addressed those already, so I'm good with it.
I just, I was gonna, which, on the notes of January, is it the third note down, this line item is already over budget for the year, and then the fourth one down, this line item, is that referring to 968 and 790?
Yes.
Okay.
And I know the 968 part of that was the cleaning of roof sanitization of the building from the COVID.
Okay.
And what was the other one?
790. Mislangian expense?
That was, yeah, her court, that was the cleaning between the court cases.
Okay.
We were paying like $500 for someone to come to court and clean in between each case.
Because we had 900 budgeted for that, for line item 790.
Right.
And we've only spent 254, 42. Is that right? Or is there going to be more?
Let's see, here, 42, 100.
Well, I'm gonna look.
Page three.
Oh.
Now, we're already over budget.
Page three.
That's $500.
Sorry, I was wrong.
790.
And what did you say that was, reason why we're over budget?
Some of it is for the cleaning at court in between the cases.
And the nine, was it 968 is a lot of the same.
Right.
Plus, also on the 968, we had to have a company come in and clean after the building was determined, after it was discovered that we have employees that had tested positive for COVID. We had the building cleaned, and that will be uncovered under the coronavirus threat also. So that's a lot of what that money was about to get over budget. Other concerns about the January's financial statement? Okay, hearing none, Ms. Keisha, when you get ready to call for roll for the January statement.
Brown?
Yes.
Head?
Yes.
Wilkerson?
Yes.
Smalling?
Yes.
Lee?
Yes.
But for record reflect that the motion carries unanimously. Now we'll move to the next one. The next item is the February 2021 financial statement.
Mr. Mayor, David Lee, I'll make the motion to adopt February 2021 financial statement.
Aye, Chandler Wilkerson.
Motion by Councilman Lee and a second by Councilwoman Wilkerson. Thank you, and we are open for discussion.
Just a quick question on the financial notes. The Verizon payment, are they, is that going to start, you said it's going to start the 1,500 monthly lease payment?
Yes, and they paid us the back payment as well.
Okay.
We've received a check for all of 2020, the payments from 2019, and the January check from 2021. And now I think the one for February is coming in also. And those are done with direct deposit, so that will be regular for us now.
That goes in the general fund?
It goes in water.
In the water.
Water, okay.
Because we had two options with it. We could put it in the water fund. It's on the water tank, which is a water property. The comptroller's office said we could put it in general fund. However, at the end of each year, we'd have to write the check from general fund to put it back into water and do all the paperwork like it was an interim loan fund. And that's a lot of trouble. There's a lot of paperwork involved in that. So it just goes straight into the water account. I would be remiss if I did not ask Ms. Keisha here before the board, do we expect more revenue to come in for property tax? I guess the big question is now, of course, with coronavirus, no one really knows what to expect with anything. But as you will notice from our current property taxes, we're down considerably from where we were last year. Last year at this time, I think we were at $498,000. This year, we're at $398,000. So we're roughly $100,000 off. You know, I don't know if people were just holding off and maybe because the weather didn't get in, or that many people have lost their jobs and just want to be delinquent on it, so.
When's the deadline?
It was February 21.
We did send out letters earlier this week to the people that hadn't paid yet to let them know that it was still due in the current amount. And we have had people calling. There's been people coming in paying like speeding tickets and stuff, I guess, because they got their stimulus payment. So hopefully the ones that haven't paid will pay us with their stimulus payment.
Very good.
Going back to, what was it, page eight we were on earlier, where we were talking about pumps, the pump that went out late last year that we ordered and came in. It was $20,741.88. So that has put, actually, we're over budget in that line now, $30,588.85. We have it on the budget, are on the agenda tonight to vote on another pump. Pump station one lost a pump. So keep in mind that you're going to be seeing this number go quite a bit higher. And we are going to be having lots of discussion about things, but we'll be coming out of this fund as we progress through tonight, so. Other discussion? Does the notes answer everyone's question?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay. Hearing no further, Ms. Keisha?
Smalling?
Yes.
Brown?
Yes.
Head?
Yes.
Wilkerson?
Yes.
Lee?
Yes.
Let the record reflect that the motion carries unanimously. We're now moving into old business. The first item on the agenda is the second reading of ordinance 0112020-2. It was to eliminate the dumpster pickup. And we had first reading on it, and then second reading was tabled. And I think all the questions got answered on that, but we'll see what happens tonight. Do I hear a motion?
Councilman Smalling, I'll make the motion to approve the second reading of the dumpster ordinance 0112020-2.
Felicia Head, second.
Have a motion by Councilman Smalling, a second by Councilwoman Head to approve second reading of ordinance number 0112020-2 to eliminate dumpster pickup. We will note under discussion of that, that it's, that this takes effect, or the city has set June the 30th, 2021, is the final date that they will do dumpster pickup. I am guessing that our public works director will work with anyone that would need some extra time on that, because it has gotten delayed for a month now. So I don't think that would be a problem, but see if you have other questions about it before we move in further.
Any of those dumpsters, I know Aaron's here, is any of those dumpsters owned by the city that's currently being used, or are they leased? Or how's that?
They're owned by the city.
So you gotta go pick them up, then?
Yes, sir.
Five?
Yeah.
Okay, that's what I was thinking.
And the majority of the ones that are owned by the city, there won't be, they wouldn't be sellable. They're at the end of their lifespan.
So we just gotta get rid of them?
Yeah, we'll take them off when we take off the metal for cleanup day and stuff like that.
Okay.
Other discussion? Hearing none, Ms. Keisha, when you're ready?
Ready?
Yes.
Brown?
Yes.
Smalling?
Yes.
Wilkerson?
Yes.
Head?
Yes.
Let the record show that the motion carries unanimously. We move to new business now. Something that has been with us a while, resolution R022021-1, the charter amendments. This has been discussed for quite a while now. Our attorney, Mr. Bradley, got you a package out of the, all the changes and what would be the updated resolution. So I'll entertain a motion on this, and we need at least, it's my understanding, and correct me if I'm wrong, Mr. Bradley, we need at least four votes for this to pass.
That's your end, Mayor.
Okay. I'll entertain a motion.
Mr. Mayor, I'll make, Councilman Smalling, I'll make the motion to pass ordinance 032021, no, wait, 21-1, resolution, yes.
I'll second. Doug Brown, second.
We have a motion, Councilman Smalling, and a second by Councilman Brown to pass resolution R022021-1 for charter amendments for the city of Westmoreland. So we're open for any discussion. Mr. Bradley, I commend you, Mr. Bradley, on the hard work that you and your team have put in on this, because I thought it was a very good document. It met a lot of our needs. There were a couple places that I had to read twice, but I think it's a good document.
I left, Mr. Mayor, I left some of the things in there for historical purposes. For example, the 1951 council, the cliff protest, the city attorney, I didn't want to take that out, going to give some historical reference in the future. Some of the things on those all things we did lately, because there was nobody in there for it. But it does those things that we talked about in the meeting, I guess it was a month ago or several weeks ago, one of our recent meetings, we looked into all of the changes. So those changes that we discussed for all of this resolution.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to add that for the minutes that it be added, that this will come back ratified from the legislature, and we'll have to vote on it to approve their acceptance.
That is correct. Once the state legislature receives our resolution, they will go through the document and make sure everything is technically correct with it. Then the legislature will vote on it, and then it will be sent back to the city once the state approves it, and it has to be ratified. And I'm guessing that will be in June or July, possibly?
Yes, probably in June, July, it'll be another resolution. And then by December, we have to get that proof of ratification back to the Secretary of State office. And I suggest we give them acknowledgement from them this time, because that's what the problem was a few years ago. We sent it to them, and they never acknowledged, so it just goes into effect. So we want to be sure that this goes into effect to make all the changes we've been talking about for two years.
Okay. Ms. Trout is listening with full audio volume over there to make sure that this happens. And all council members are available tonight to know that, so it should go off without any problems. So that's what we expect to happen anyway. Other discussion about the document? Okay, hearing none. Ms. Keisha, if you will call for roll?
Head?
Yes.
Lee?
Yes.
Wilkerson?
Yes.
Brown?
Yes.
Smalling?
Yes.
Let the record reflect that the motion carries unanimously. So I'll get that document signed tonight, John, and Keisha can get it to you ASAP.
It'd probably be better if she just sent that directly to Representative Lambert, and also with the comptroller, for hell. If we get that directly to them, and they'll put that ahead on the call, and get it to the legislative attorney's office, get this prepared for his presentation at the Capitol.
Okay, very good. Thank you again for your hard work on it. The next item on our agenda is ordinance number 03021-1 of the weather policy. We, while we get a motion?
Mayor, I make the motion, Felicia Head, to adopt ordinance 032021-1.
Mr. Mayor, Councilman Smalling, I'll second that motion.
Have a motion by Councilwoman Head, a second by Councilman Smalling to adopt the ordinance. This will be first to reading. The ordinance will require two readings. So if there's anything that is in it that we want to change between now and second reading, that can be done. So I'll open it for any discussion that you might have.
I just had a question about the last paragraph. By the way, I think this is a great ordinance. This is a good step and a great direction for employees that, you know, we may not have another snowfall like this for some time, but then you never know. And this definitely sets up for someone trying to get out of their house when they just are not able to. I know I was stuck in my driveway for about four days in a row, and it's just impossible to do anything or go anywhere. But one of the questions I had was, it says, where these employees deemed essential personnel would provide a choice between time off to be used at a later date equivalent to time awarded. That's, I believe, it's, to me, it sounds a lot like comp time. And I just wanted to see if anyone else felt that same way, and how would we keep up with that? What would we do? Is there something in place that you may already be thinking about?
This is items that we can bring up at the work study and hash it out before we print the document for second reading. And if anyone wants to respond to it now, that's my answer.
It's something to think about if we, now that we have time.
It's a good point. I'll clear that out, how they handle it, yes.
All right.
Okay. Anything else? Ms. Keisha, if you will call for roll?
Lee?
Yes.
Brown?
Yes.
Wilkerson?
Yes.
Smalling?
Yes.
Head? Yes.
Let the record reflect that first reading passes unanimously. The next item on the agenda is the IDB appointments.
We skipped spring for that day.
Oh, excuse me, uh, excuse me, uh, I did skip spring, okay, and it was a very good point that was brought up, why do we vote on spring cleanup day, and it's because it doesn't have a line item that's in the budget, so we need to make sure we separate that and put it in, so I'll entertain a motion for spring cleanup day, that will be Saturday, April the 10th, 2021, from 8:00 until 12:00 noon, at the old Public Works Building on Lake Road.
Mr. Mayor, Councilman Brown would like to make a motion that we set this year's 2021 Spring Cleanup Day for Saturday, April the 10th, from 8:00 to 12:00.
Felicia Head, second.
Motion by Councilman Brown, second by Councilwoman Head, we're open for discussion.
Do we have the cost of the dumpsters and everything already for the lines and the budget?
If you go to your sanitation budget, and the overage that we have on that, I'm thinking it was about $800 with cupboards, the dumpsters, and then the other just goes into the salary and overtime budget, because generally, everyone comes out to help on that day, so usually it is all overtime.
How, how are we advertising?
We will be on Facebook, in the newspaper, on the website.
And repeat.
I guess we can post, post it on the post office.
Water bill, can you put it on the water bill?
Um, I think it takes too much of them.
Yes.
We might commit it on there, we're only allowed so much room, so I'm not sure.
When's the next water bills?
They'll go out at the end of this month, so that would...
That'd be perfect, if it could be done.
If everybody got their mail on time, it would be pretty nice.
I think it's good to definitely state that you must be a resident in the City of Westmoreland, I don't know if that's an issue for y'all, Aaron, is it? Has there ever been?
I got a pretty good guard dog at the gate.
Oh, okay.
Pretty good, on everybody.
I also want it noted while we're on camera, that elderly and disabled can call and schedule their pickups.
Yeah, if they're unable to, to get out, we, Mr. Sizemore and his crew are very good about going and helping our elderly and disabled.
Glad we're able to provide it again, than had last year, or did we?
We had one in the hall, and we had one this, this one will be this part.
Yeah.
Other discussion. Ms. Keisha?
Smalling?
Yes.
Wilkerson?
Yes.
Lee?
Yes.
Head?
Yes.
Brown?
Yes.
Let the record reflect that the motion carries unanimously. Now, back on the agenda, the next item is the IDB appointments.
Mayor, I'd like to defer this to the work study, please.
We have a motion.
Felicia Head, sorry.
We have a motion to defer to the work study.
Mr. Mayor, Councilman Smalling, I'll second that motion.
Okay, we have a motion by Councilwoman Head, a second by Councilman Smalling, to defer to the work study with a deferment, there's no discussion, so Ms. Keisha, if you'll call for roll.
Wilkerson?
Yes.
Brown?
Yes.
Lee?
No.
Smalling?
Yes.
Head? Yes.
Four yes, one no, the IDB appointments will be discussed at the work study. Next item on the agenda will be to purchase a replacement force main pump for the Dutch Creek Pumping Station. Do I have a motion, so, hang a second, so we can start the discussion.
Mayor, Felicia Head makes the motion to approve.
Mr. Mayor, Councilman Smalling, I'll make the motion to approve the purchase.
Have a motion by the Councilwoman Head, a second by Councilman Smalling, to approve the purchase, we're open for discussion.
Can I ask you some questions?
Would you like to come on up? A bit of leisure, and try and get across the room. And I might add, for the discussion purposes, the price of this pump is $28,000, says yes.
Mr. Sizemore, as I stated earlier, that we have went through several pumps, and we've exceeded over the amount that they, the previous council has put in place for the budget, my question to you as the supervisor is what have you put in place, or what are you doing to try to prevent all of these pumps going out, because it seems like we went through several.
Yes, we have done several things, actually, we're getting on a maintenance schedule that we previously had not had on the pumps, as far as changing filters and oil, I have also changed the brand type of oil that we use, which this pump is different than the majority of the pumps that I have purchased, the majority of the pumps that I have to purchase is the vacuum pumps, this one is actually a force main pump, so it's, it's different, but the biggest amount of the cost has went to the vacuum pumps, that's why I'm talking about those specifically, but, so we've, we've tried to put in a lot of maintenance and focus on preventative things, instead of just fixing them once they tear up, and, you know, only time will tell if it's gonna make it any difference, the biggest issue, in my opinion, is the runtime on them. The Station 1 and Station 2, which would be Dutch Creek and Davis Branch Stations, they, they run constantly, 24/7, they, the pumps don't ever take a break, and like Jerry and I've talked about before, you know, it's not designed to run but like, you know, seven, eight hours a day, max, you know, where it's running 24, some of them are running 24/7, and a lot of it is due to the age of the system, we can't find the leaks because the system is so deep in the ground to repair the small leaks, and a small leak on the vacuum system, when it's miles away from the station, creates a big amount of runtime on the pumps, and so I'm trying to implement the, you know, maintenance part of it to help with, hopefully prevent against the breakdowns of the pumps as fast, and then we're also working on replacing some pits, trying to find some leaks and things like that, but that's also when we have time, you know, with staffing issues and everything else, you know, and weather, all that depends on how much time we can spend, you know, focus on trying to fix these issues, but as of right now, what I have done personally is the maintenance issues, the oil filters and things like that, we've done a lot of updates of that, so I'm hoping that that'll change, but this specific pump is not, it doesn't take oil and things like that to run it, it runs off a belt drive electric motor, so it just, when they break, they just break, these, and Chris can vouch for this, a lot of times, what kills these pumps is things that people flush, or they get into the system, toys, things like that, they'll get in there and they'll bind the pump up, because what this is, is it's a screw, imagine a corkscrew, like you're opening a wine bottle with, imagine that being encased in a big rubber housing, that's encased of a steel pipe, well, when that corkscrew turns, it's a positive displacement pump, so it's, once it turns, it pushes on the walls of that rubber encasement, and it forces the fluid out the other end, so it pulls it from this side to that side, and what happens is there's no tolerance, I mean, it's, it's nothing, it's always touching the walls at some point down through there, so when you get something solid in there, which is not designed to push a solid through, so say if you got a rock, or a dog toy, or something like that, that somebody flushed down, once it gets in there, it puts it in a bind, and it's either gonna tear the rubber as it pushes it through, because it's gonna make it push it through, there's no way you can not push through, so it's either gonna tear the rubber, or it's gonna break that shaft, and this one actually broke the shaft, we don't know what it is until we get it apart to see, and a lot of times, once it does break it, it already gets pushed through anyways, so we'll know more once he gets it apart, but these pumps are a lot more expensive than the vacuum pumps, we bought the other one that we had budgeted for, we did purchase it, and as a backup pump, and we still have it, but it will not fit in this station, because this station in particularly that broke, takes a bigger pump than what we had already bought for a backup pump, so.
I think one of my questions is, you said that you, how long have you been doing the ledger on the oil filters and all of the service?
Okay, so we started that, I want to say eight to 10 months ago, something, Jerry, you remember, it's been somewhere around, it's been several months that we started updating, like making sure that we do the maintenance on them, and the filter changes and stuff, when we started that, we were using a different type of oil, and after that happened, we had like three pumps go out, just bam, 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 and when we did some investigating on it, the oil was starting, for some reason, was like turning into a sludge, and it wouldn't let it circulate, and it wouldn't even do an oil change yet, and I don't know if it was the brand or what, so I did a lot more digging, found, called the manufacturers, and found out what we were specifically supposed to run in those pumps, because when I, whenever I first started, we just ran Rotella in them, and, well, that evidently is not what we were supposed to run in, so I, this now have ordered vacuum pump oils specifically from the, ordered from Glowback, which is who we get a lot of silver parts from, and they also sell us the pumps as well, so it's coming straight from them, so I know it's the correct oil that goes in it, and, you know, so far, it's doing good, but I don't want to jinx myself and say that it's going to fix the issue, but like I said, the biggest issue is just runtime, it's just, you know, the amount of time that we had to spend, or that they had to spend running constantly is what's killing, but we are trying to make it better, you know, make it last as long as we can.
When they're, when they're doing the on-call checks on the weekends, what part of that process do they look at for those pumps to verify that?
Okay, every, every morning when we come in on Saturdays and Sundays on our day, well, every day, Monday through Friday also, but specifically Saturdays and Sundays when we're by ourselves, we'll come in, and all of the pumps have a sight glass on, and we'll check the oil level in all the pumps, and we always, we got a checklist, and we always, you know, initially put the date on it and check it off, and if we have to add to a pump, we have a section where we write down what pump that is, and how much we had to add, that way we can kind of keep up with which ones are using what and things, and we also write down the run hours, how long the pumps have ran.
So that's what they do when they're checking that situation?
Yes, sir, so like if you look at overtime sheets, it'll say check stations and water, silver and water rounds, or something like that, that's what we're doing, because we're coming in, we're checking the pump stations, make sure, one, that they're not down, we're not losing vacuum, and two, we're keeping a check on the oil and hours and all that kind of thing.
And you see those things on the log?
Yes, sir.
Monday?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
So right now, the pump is operational?
No.
It's not operational at all?
It's been down for, well, since that big rain that we had a couple weeks ago, so it's been down ever since then.
And I may have asked you before, but I can't remember now, is this not one of those pumps that we generally have to get in from overseas?
Yes, now Jimmy has found somebody that will get it to us, and they're in country now, but it still takes a while, he ordered it last Wednesday, Thursday, somewhere around in there, or Thursday, I believe, last week, and he said it should be here, hopefully within about three to four weeks from that time, so we're looking, you know, it still takes a while, because I believe, if I'm understanding it correctly, they kind of build these as you order them, because I know we got four pumping stations, and we got like three different sizes of them, but we can use some in the smaller ones, but this one has the biggest ones, and we don't have a big, big, big one, and it's also a belt drive, we have, two stations have direct drive, so the motor's hooked directly to the pump with like a drive shaft, and then we have two that are belt drives, they have a big motor and a bigger pump, so they turn it on a belt because it'll shear the drive shaft if they run it direct rather, not the pumps so big, so the belt gives it a little, it'll, when it kicks on, you'll hear it spin, and it gives it just a, I guess, a little more plate or something, I don't know, but kind of a cushion, so it doesn't break things as much, but, so, and that's the one that's out, is the belt drive.
So the station's completely down?
No, sir, no, if it was completely down, we would...
So how, how does that affect?
Okay, so we have, yeah, so we have two pumps in the basement, both of them are these pumps, we have three upstairs of the vacuum pumps, the basement pumps are the direct, uh...
Force main.
Force main pumps, so that's, we've got one running right now, and that's what's keeping the station up, if we, God forbid, had a big rain like that, and another rock or something got pushed through, and it broke that, I, to be honest, I don't know what we would do, if, other than pumping it out at the station, but I don't know how we would do that, but we would be in a world of hurt if it, if it comes to that point, so it's pretty much, I mean, we have to have it, it's no, you know, way that we can't, because if it goes down, then that whole area out there will be it without silver, that's the mayor's house.
Everything basically from, um...
Top of the heap.
Summer drive back?
Yep, Felicia's house is on that one, your house.
Brown, we're going to your house.
Okay, I'll leave it to you.
Doug is on Station 2, and Brown's on Station 4, so.
But the residents right now should not see a disruption?
No, there won't be, no, there should not be a disruption, if anybody has any problems, they need to call us, if they hear a roar outside of their house, outside the bedroom window, call us, if they're probably...
In a nutshell, you're running on your emergency pump right now.
Yeah.
So that's the importance of getting, it's, it's not an option of... So that's the importance of, of getting, it's, it's not an option of, um, what we have, uh, thank goodness you don't have to go to the bank and be doing an emergency loan to buy one. Uh, it is gonna have to come out of your reserve fund, but, um, you know, it, it, this is something that's gotta, gotta be done. Unfortunately, later down the agenda, we've got other items to speak of. It's gonna need to come out of this fund also, so.
These pumps are depreciating, right? In the budget or the?
See, I don't know, uh, because it's a device, uh, I mean, it, it should have a long life on it. But it was like Mr. Sizemore was saying, because they run so many hours. Uh, and the four-sman pumps not so much as a vacuum pumps. And the vacuum pumps are for one that we, uh, wear out quite frequently, but they're not nearly as, as expensive. But this is the big pump that pumps it to the sewer plant. And, um, you know, there's no way of getting it to the wastewater plant and, and, um, you know, we, we basically have two stations that take the same pump. And then our other two stations take another style pump as, but, um, and same. We have an extra pump, but unfortunately we have the wrong pump.
Well, I was just thinking of it in the financial terms as far as how we put money back for additional ones and things like that.
And, uh, I, when I first became mayor, I used to get a monthly report of each pump and its serial number and its date of purchase and model number and what, uh, what station it was in. But, uh, the council deemed that later on that was an awful lot of material to be getting together. So, uh, but those reports were dropped. And, uh, I, I do know that, that everything's being done, uh, you know, right now as, as far as trying to make sure the oil's changed, that they're updated and checked. Uh, I'm sure we can, uh, investigate further to, uh, to set a bit up. You know, but it's, it's a closed system, so you can't really look inside of it without tearing it down. And, uh, to tear one down, and maybe if that's a, a program that would be available, I don't think we have the means to do it, but it might be after, let's say, 10,000 hours or 20,000 hours that, uh, there's a company that comes in and actually tears these down. Uh, our problem right now, and this is not really related to purchasing a pump, we need to get the point across to the public, but, you know, that's not a trash can. And, uh, one of our number one enemies is these flushable wipes. And these wipes get into these pumps and, and this is happening all across the United States right now. And I'll, I'll let anyone that is listening to the meeting tonight online know this is a direct result of possibly wipes. And we're looking at $28,000 here. And when you're trying to get water in sewer mills lowered and we're purchasing three of it. And tell me if I'm wrong, I think at least one of the last two was, was shut down and, and broke because of wipes.
Yes, sir.
So, uh, and they, they don't like, uh, they don't like anything else. And they said they don't like valves, they don't like check valves. Uh, they're, they're just an enemy to plumbing, so.
I think, uh, speaking on the wipes, not to interrupt you Jerry, but, uh, they'll hit the valves and, and, uh, our system has butterfly valves, so you think a pipe and you think it's got a line pretty much drew in the middle of it. Well, when you got it open, it's just got like a, a sliver standing there. Well, those wipes will hit it and it's pulling vacuum on this side, so it just folds it around it. And then another one folds around it and it just keeps building up. Well, then it stops the pipe up, then we go out and we have to work the valve. If we're lucky enough, we can work it and it'll break it loose and then it sucks it through. Well, when it sucks it through, if it happens that way, uh, and it does break loose, then you got a wad, uh, and, and they kinda get hard after they've been in there for a while. And, uh, it's almost like a really hard rope, uh, is kinda what I've thought of. Like when you try to pull them out of those pumps, they're, they're like a real hard, like a dog chew toy rope, like really big. And they get real hard and, and you got a clot of them, you know, six inches around. Well, when that hits that pump all at once, and you can actually hear them come into the tank. Uh, but when it hits that pump all at once, I think that's got a lot of why it'll put it in a bind and, and just break it. But, uh, that, that is a huge problem. I got an email on it last week, uh, photo, they had a pump that, uh, it would probably be a hundred thousand dollar pump, but a, a huge, uh, uh, sewer system. And, uh, I mean, the intake on this thing is this big around, so a lot bigger than anything we've got. It's probably a two-foot round pump and it's completely caulked, clogged up with these wipes. And, uh, so if it's gonna do something like that to that big of a pump, I can just imagine what it's doing to ours, you know?
A lot of people are using the Clorox and disinfectant wipes right now?
Yeah.
And they, they purchase them and they read on them where it says flushable. They are flushable, they will go through your toilet, but that's as far as they know. Uh, they, they don't like to go much farther. And I've got a witness that is sitting right behind you of how many of those go through, that he has to basically pick out by hand when it arrives at the wastewater treatment plant. Because we've got big screens that, that are catching these things. And, uh, it, it's, uh, it's absolutely unreal and amazing because they've got nylon and some kinda poly and stuff. They don't break down. Uh, they may say biodegradable on it. Biodegradable, biodegradable is probably 75 years.
Yeah.
So.
He gets about a dumpster full of them a week out there. Cause he, he dumps, uh, he puts them in a bucket, carries them down, throws them in the dumpster. And, uh, it's, it's about a dumpster a week and it's pretty close to it.
Moving along here, we got by a pump, so you have other questions about the pump itself. But I think it's a good discussion for the public to hear about it, to know what it is costing them.
Right.
Ms. Keisha?
Lee?
Yes.
Brown?
Yes.
Wilkerson?
Yes.
Head?
Yes.
Smalling?
Yes.
But record, reflect that the motion carries unanimously. As I said earlier, that we'll have to come out of our, uh, reserve fund. So we will need to be doing a, uh, a budget amendment shortly. So we, we will include that in our budget amendment to, to, uh, to be able to, to make that, uh, all nice and tidy. The next item is to hire Caleb Gray as a full-time public works, uh, uh, person.
I'd like to speak. Um, Mr. Sizemore?
No, then most, most?
I'm sorry.
I make a motion to hire, um, uh, Cody Gray. I'm sorry, Caleb Gray. Felicia Head, sorry.
I'll Doug Brown's second.
Have a motion by Councilman Head, uh, a second by Councilman Brown. Uh, we're open for discussion. Go ahead.
Mr. Sizemore, how's he doing?
Um, he's doing well, um, so far, uh, he's done good on the garbage truck. Uh, I think it was yesterday, uh, when it started raining.
Yesterday we worked on the sewer up here. When you come up here.
Yeah, that would be it.
Yeah, we got to put him in on his first experience with a sewer issue and he did well with that. He didn't throw up or anything, so that's a plus. Uh, but he's been there every day, um, and he seems to like the job, so.
Good.
Uh, he's, uh, he's pretty quiet. He doesn't say a lot at work, but it could just be where he's getting to know everybody too.
Have you done some safety run downs with him and some of these things like that?
Yes, uh, we talked about like sewer gases, uh, uh, you know, things like hanging on the truck and, and, uh, make sure he wears his, uh, or, uh, I can't remember.
Vase.
His vase and things like that. Uh, and, uh, you know, when to wear them and things like that, when you don't have to wear it, you know, anytime you're working on the road, make sure you got it on. Um, and, uh, yeah, uh, we, we're trying to do a little bit, uh, trying to do some, uh, you know, training on, on the sewer stations with him, which that'll take a lot of time. That's the longest thing around here. But, uh, he's, so far he's, he's done really good, uh, he's observed it, so.
So as someone that is riding the trash truck, who's aware of the advancement opportunities, he can ask for us if he wants to.
Yes, sir. Yeah.
That brings up a good question. Does he have any certifications or any desire to be further certified?
He, you know, he, he said that, uh, he's interested in it, um, which, you know, I hope, uh, he sticks around long enough cause, uh, you know, he's gotta be here a year, uh, before we consider we get, um, the license and things. But, uh, yes, he is interested, uh, and that was one of the questions I asked, you know, when I kinda interviewed him. Um, so, yeah, I mean, he seems to be interested and, uh, I think he would do well with that. Uh, so, uh, I hope, I got, if he sticks around. I don't get plans for somebody, then they're not here after six months.
And I might add, while you're discussing that, this, uh, I went ahead and authorized, uh, Mr. Sizemore to put Mr. Gray on because we were down three people and that puts it pretty much in an emergency situation. Uh, but, but it was done with the understanding that it would be coming to the council for a confirmation vote. And, um, he still has two openings right now, yes, sir. Could be immediate openings.
Have you received applications for those?
Yes, sir, I have.
And the deadline on that is tomorrow.
And you have them on file with you?
Yes.
Okay.
Other questions, concerns? I spoke with him yesterday briefly and he seems like he's a great young man. Uh, very man, just like you said, he seemed like he was eager to, to learn and, uh, we'll, we'll keep our fingers crossed.
Yeah, that's right.
I think he's a great fit with the guys, so you can already tell it in the timing of trash, trash routes just in, in Monday and Thursday.
Yes, it's, uh, the, the, uh, I'm trying to say this delicately, but yeah, the, the time of the trash route has cut down about an hour, hour and a half, so it's been good.
That's excellent.
That's great.
Ms. Keisha, it's up to you now.
Smalling?
Yes.
Wilkerson?
Yes.
Lee?
Yes.
Brown?
Yes.
Head?
Yes.
But record, reflect that the motion carries unanimously and, uh, we can get all, all of that made official now. And just stay where you are for a second because the, uh, next item on the agenda is the Henry Harris Road paving. Uh, as you will, will note, uh, we're going to be paving, uh, 31E, old 31E, any, I guess, any day now, Aaron may even have an update for us. So with whatever being what it's been, uh, uh, we probably don't want to, uh, obviously give us the first few batches a mix out of it because there's polymers involved in the asphalt and, uh, it definitely helps it adhere and mix together well. So, uh, it doesn't hurt my feelings, but, uh, they wait a few more days. However, uh, it's like an obstacle track down through there right now is, is with many roads in Westmoreland. But Henry Harris Road actually had part of it giveaway. And, uh, we'll get a motion in a second here so we can discuss this officially.
Ms. Mayor, I make the motion that we do the additional paving on Henry Harris Road.
I'll second that motion.
Have a motion by Councilman Smalling, second by Councilman Brown on the Henry Harris Road paving. Uh, go ahead, Eric.
Uh, yes, I received a quote, uh, when I asked, uh, Mr. Riley to come out and look at it. It was $7,600, um, for the additional piece up to the top of the hill. Uh, and this was before the road, uh, gave out. It, I already had this in place. Um, that section of road is the worst section on that entire road. It's, it's basically gravel. Uh, what gravel that I didn't put in it, it was already basically gravel before that. Um, he said, uh, after I talked with Mr. Riley yesterday, uh, he told me that, uh, they would, they're planning to be here by the end of the month, uh, close to the end of the month. And I said, uh, well, he said that they had planned to start last Monday. They brought their crew back and then with all the rain and everything, they weren't able to work. And, uh, when I talked to him, I said, well, um, I said, I would prefer you to go ahead and put a couple of people in, in front of us a little bit, uh, just so we're not getting the first little bit out. And he said he understood that. Um, and he said, uh, by the first week of April, they should be here, no later than the first week of April. So, um, weather permitting, you know, unless we just have rain constantly. Uh, but, uh, but he said that, uh, you know, it shouldn't be any issue while they're here to go ahead and knock this out, uh, for that price.
What, what's the length, what's the, the distance that, that we're paving?
To be honest with you, I haven't measured it.
But it's the top of the hill?
It's the top of the, top of first hill.
But not the ceiling, it's just, just to the top of the hill? To the, to the end of, um, no, yeah, the end of Henry Harris where it begins on, on 31, right?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
How thick is it, Eric?
Right now?
No, how thick will it be when they pave it?
I believe it'll be two inches, I believe it's two inches. Uh, it's either inch and a half or two inches, but I believe it's two inches.
Does, do you have a quote that states that? Cause what we have?
I do not, um, and I could ask for that, um.
If you would, I, I appreciate it, cause I think it needs to state.
Are, are you gonna be doing some major ditching over there in the meantime to prepare for that?
Um, on 031 or are you talking about?
Well, Henry Harris and 031.
Um, we actually went out there and, uh, ditched the other day. Uh, there, uh, right in that area, there's a lot of river raprock that they put in there. Um, so it's, if I did anything, I would have to dig that up. But this actually, um, they actually come out and they clean the edges off. Uh, and if it need ditching, they'll either, uh, ditch a little bit of it or they'll tell me what I need to ditch out to keep the roads from, uh, getting washed out and things like that. Uh, is what he, he had told me on the phone, so, um, but, uh, we did work on a lot of the ditch on that road, uh, which that road is kinda like where Ms. Head lives. Uh, forest drive area, there's a lot of trees on, on, in the yards and, uh, man, they fill the ditches up. I mean, it's, uh, it's a battle, uh, down those, a couple of those roads out in there to, to keep the, the leaves out. Um, but, uh, but yeah, that's a, we, we actually hauled three loads of leave and, uh, and debris out of the ditches this last week, I believe it was.
Did the council do a seal bid on this or did it not need a seal bid since it was over a certain amount?
No, what, what happened, we called and asked them, they're, they're paving.
Okay.
Uh, they're gonna be in the area, therefore this would be the best part. And they wouldn't give us this, uh, price, uh, any other time. It's just while they're here, they're, they're gonna be right there headed and all they gotta do is just turn up the hill and down. Uh, I would dare say, uh, of course, if, if it is deemed that we do need to go back and get a seal bid for it. And, and the reason that we inquired about this was while they were here to check it. The road was getting in such bad shape and the people that live out there were asking about it and saying, what are you gonna do, you know? Uh, it makes sense for you to at least do this part. So we had no idea what the cost would be. And I was just looking at it, he submitted this on February the 17th and it's, uh, $7,600 to, uh, of course, we're, we're doing $209,000 worth of paving. So, uh, but this is a good price, but the thing about it, if you ask him to quote this price today, it's probably gonna at least be 30% higher because, uh, paving is all. because paving is all petroleum based and you know how much the gas once went up in the last, last month. So this, this bid would, would be the same way. I don't know. I guess that's, that's where we ask our attorney exactly, maybe what, how we move forward. Being we've already done the seal bids and they kept us the best price and this is what we're going to, this was just kind of an addendum to it. And of course, that was subject to the council while we came to do that with. And also, there is no, no, we've exhausted the paving line. Plus, we've taken it out of the fund balance. So in order to do this, unless somebody comes up with a better idea, it would come out of fund balance additionally also.
So while they're on 031E, this is, this, they're, they're saying that they could do this portion of Henry Harris Road for $7,600. I'd like to hear from Mr. Bradley also. Mr. Bradley, you still with us?
Yeah, I'm trying to let you in. Okay, one quick question.
Do you see any issue with us adding, the Rogers group added an additional piece for Henry Harris to be paid for $7,600, but we've already did seal bids for the project on 031E. Is there any issue with that going forward? Can we approve that tonight? Or is that considered a separate job or a separate project?
What are you going to do with your seal bids? You going to reject all the bids?
No, no, sir. We've already voted and they are coming. We're going to do, just to use an amount, one mile of road. And on that one mile of road, we had a portion of another road that has collapsed. And we have asked what they would charge us while they're here to go ahead and fix that for us.
But you said it was up to $10,000, right? So I don't see a problem with that. It's an emergency for one thing and also it's an amount that wouldn't necessarily have to be bid.
Okay, thank you. Thanks, Mayor.
We just wanted to make sure we're okay on it.
I think you're fine.
Okay, thank you. So it will basically now be up to the wishes of the council. Aaron, do you think it fit bid? I know y'all put on the gravel and done some work on it. Do you think that it will be sufficient?
I actually spoke with him about it yesterday and he said that they would still hold to that price.
They're doing a two-inch top on the rest of 031E, right? Isn't that standard?
I believe that's right. To be honest, it's been so long since we did this. I can't remember.
Some of it was one and a half and some of it was two. We've had so many studies done and we had the different bids, so.
They did it. Actually, the engineers drew up what they, our engineers drew up what they recommended for 031 in Sundra Drive. So, I would have to go back and look because I remember it was either inch and a half or two inches. And they tossed that back and forth a lot and I can't remember exactly what we wound up going with on all the road. So I don't want to lie to you. But I can find out a number from him on this. But, I mean, I would think that it would be at least an inch and a half. And he even says in this bid, considering how rough the existing pavement is, you know, is what he priced it for. So I'm assuming that he's going to take a little extra material because the weight from that worry. I know what assuming does to.
Okay. Any other questions? There again, once, once this is voted on and if it is passed, then it will be up to the council to do a budget amendment to move that line, some money from that line over. Okay, Ms. Keisha, I don't hear anyone else, so go right ahead.
Ed?
Yes.
Lee?
Yes.
Wilkerson?
Yes.
Brown?
Yes.
Smalling?
Yes.
But for record, reflect that it passes unanimously. Mr. Ismore, thank you. I think it's all we've got for, for right now. May have a little bit of extra that comes up that you may be able to stick around just a few minutes for.
Yes, sir.
Has our engineers joined us?
We have someone on the iPad. Not sure who it is.
Okay, that, that may be, it was, can we check and see? Because the next item is the wastewater treatment plant bid.
Are they unmuted?
They're not.
Whoever's just joined our meeting is iPad too. Would you please unmute yourself and identify yourself? Either that or we're going to put you in the waiting room. It's your choice.
Okay, I guess that's not Mr. Dickinson, so.
Well, they're back in the waiting room.
Okay. We'll move ahead with this. The next item is the wastewater treatment plant bid. We will get a motion in a second and discuss it.
Ms. Mayor, I'll make a motion that we move forward with wastewater treatment plant bid. Councilman Brown?
Mr. Mayor, I'll second the motion. Councilman Smalling?
Okay, we have a motion by Councilman Brown, a second by Councilman Smalling to go ahead and discuss the wastewater treatment plant bid. We had the bid opening last Tuesday. Did everyone get the documents from that so that they've had a chance to look at those? And Ms. Keisha, give us some, just a few minutes ago. Basically, I think there were five bids total. There was a bid by Jones Brothers Construction. And when we went through all of, well, the engineers went through all of those bids and they found out that it was incomplete. So there was two areas on the bid where they didn't check proper areas of it, give documentation about things and it basically disqualified it. The council can look over the fact that those items wasn't submitted on the bid and can, can still accept it. But it's our, the recommendation of our engineering firm that we accept WNO Construction. And they have a bid of $6,487,000. And that's their base bid on a Parks and Plant, which was what, what our, that was the base. The alternative one and two were other brands of companies that produced the material. Best way that I can, can say it is, the way I understand it, if you wanted to buy a Chevrolet, they priced you a Chevrolet. But if you wanted to buy a Ford or a Chrysler, then, let's say A would have been Ford or number one would have been Ford, number two would have been Chrysler. So it gave alternatives, but the base bid was everything that was in our plans with a Parks and Unit that the state had okayed. So we'll work through any questions that you might have. They put in recommendations and research from, from former plants and it had names and numbers that we could call, which are certified sewer plant operator, wastewater treatment plant operator. Penny asked for those names because she wanted to call the operators that closed plants themselves. And Councilman Head asked for backgrounds on the plants also. So, but this is the recommendation of our GMC, our engineers, that we go with WNO Construction of Livingston, Tennessee for $6,487,000 because they were the lowest bid that had everything complete in the bid. They checked all the boxes, answered all the questions. So if you have questions, we can go from there.
Mr. Mayor, it's easy to accept this bid at this price, but I don't think we could talk about the funding mechanism and how we're going to pay this.
Okay. Good question. We are trying to get this financed through the state of Tennessee with the revolving loan fund. Revolving loan fund monies come from the EPA. They're handed down to the state and the state of Tennessee regulates those funds. We have had to put in every year, I've been mayor six years and I've put in for it every year since I've been mayor for it to be a priority item for us to obtain funding for this plant. When we first began this journey back in 2015, the amount that was asked for was $1,900,000. As you can see, and as you can see from the bids that come in, they went from anywhere from six point, basically 6.3 million to 7.2 million. So it was a pretty wide range and we had one, two, three, five, five companies that actually come in to, to provide bids. So this would be, if you accept this bid, then the next step in the process would be to secure the funding from the revolving loan fund. If for some reason we do not obtain the funding, then everything will basically be null and void at that point.
So we currently don't have an approval on their priorities list like we have in the past?
We are on the priorities list and I don't know where we are as far as the top 10 right now, but they're waiting patiently to hear from us, waiting to see what we say tonight.
So we don't have a dollar amount that they have set aside for us at this time?
The dollar amount that you would be seeking at this time would be $6,487. And I might add that previously we had secured basically, they call it loan forgiveness of 10%, which would be 600, 600 and what would it be? 604,000, 640,000? But there is a possibility that we could obtain more. They used to call it a grant. Now they call it loan forgiveness. So we're basically $600,000 on that. It would be nice if we could double it or triple it. But, you know, I do know that we've been told that if they do the funding, we do have a minimum of 10%.
So none of those things are in place tonight like they have been in the past?
No, no. Well, because it's taken so long, we had everything pretty much secured. But because it's taken so long to get everything going, we've lost, I don't know if you say we've lost our funding. I don't know if we've really ever had a stamp on it, but it was there. And it's just like it is now. We don't have the paperwork, but the money is there. I think they, I forgot how many millions they told me they had, that they have secured and have put back.
So they can give us an answer pretty quick on the funding?
I don't know, but anything would be real quick. I'm not, I'm not going to go that far.
Relatively.
I never thought it would take me six years and three months to, to get to where we are tonight, but it, but it did.
Okay. Now, let's talk about the payback on this. A 30-year or a 20-year or?
Well, right now, it's on 20 years, but none of it's set in stone until they discuss it with us.
How does Ms. Penny, is that her name? How does Ms. Penny feel about this? And I'd like to hear what Mr. Chris thinks about it as well.
Ms. Penny, who's our certified operator, and I spoke to her today because I asked her did she want to be at the meeting tonight or zoom in. And she said that she had worked with WNO in the past. They had a good reputation, but as a matter of fact, they built one of our tanks. So they've been around for a while, have a wealth of experience and they're pretty much local. They're right up the road in Livingston. So she put her stamp of approval on it. And Chris, I'll let you, let you speak to it also.
Back in the mid 90s when WNO built the tank down there, I got to know a lot of guys. Very trustworthy. I feel comfortable with WNO building the new plant myself.
You looked over the plans and approved of what they presented?
Yeah, I've been looking over them for the last four years. They've been a few argument, but pretty much they look real good now.
And there may be some change orders. I can't imagine a project of this size and the magnitude of it, it wouldn't have some change orders. So there may be some adjustments as we go through and all of that will be worked on with, with our lending partners and then also.
Speaking of, speaking of change orders, unlike a typical job, because we don't have the funding secured yet, will there be like a timeline to start the construction and a completion date at some point?
Once we secure funding, then we can set the timeline. Until we have the, if for some reason funding was rejected and, you know, they don't want to have a couple of million dollars in parts ordered to start it with. So the projected date on it, I think they put in the documents 12 months. Honestly, I expect it to be closer to at least 13, possibly 14 months of construction.
But I know sometimes when we delay these things, they, the change orders and stuff add to the cost and the timelines get skewed and.
We, we had the choice. A couple of weeks ago, something did come up. It was after it had already been advertised for bid, possibly making a change. And the engineers helped out on all of the bid documents as long as they could before they had to submit any alternate plans. And I made the decision, I'll take my lumps for it. I said, at this point, we're not going to change anything simply because it took us six years to get here. I did not want to start the changes and anything have to go back to the state for reapproval and put us behind. I said, I want the plant started. We need to get it started for a lot of obvious reasons. And we not only need to get it going, but get ground broke, get our funding secured, get ground broken. And then if there's some minor changes that we need to make, then we will do that. And that seems to be standard practice with all the folks that has sewer. And that seems to be standard practice with all the folks that has sewer plants that I have talked to.
So a hard deadline will come at a pre-construction hearing where some of those things may have already been worked out before a pre-construction hearing, right?
But the pre-construction hearing will be with the plans as the state has them right now. That's what's been approved.
Okay.
Okay, anything else? Okay, Ms. Keisha, hearing, hearing nothing, go ahead.
12%?
Yes.
Head?
Yes.
Lee?
What was the motion again?
To accept the bid from WNO Construction for $6,487,000, which was the low bid, the recommendation of our engineers. To, the recommendation of our engineers to accept it. It was the lowest bid, but was a complete bid.
That's fine, I just didn't hear, I just didn't hear who made most and who made second. But I'm yes of it.
Okay, Councilman Brown made the motion and Councilman Smalling made second.
Smalling?
Yes.
Brown?
Yes.
Is the motion unanimous?
Yes, sir.
Okay, that's record reflect, but it is unanimous. We need to just have a caveat that goes with this treatment plant. We had a consent order that was handed down in 2000, I think it was 2017, it may have been 16, that was basically telling us of all the problems that we had with our treatment plant. And Buddy Koontz wrote a plan and had it to present to TDEC for the treatment plant and it meant to stipulations of what is called an SEP, a supplemental environmental project. Because the plant got put on hold, TDEC has been researching this order, updating it, but keeping it alive. What we have found is that a new order has been issued. All of you have a copy of that order and we need to know how to proceed with it. I had GMC to go ahead and ask for a 30-day extension on it. So we have until April 4th now to move on this. And GMC put together a proposal for us and I received that. We had a meeting about it yesterday and we were going to be able to use the information that Buddy Koontz delivered to us in 2016. Well, according to our engineer, TDEC is no longer going to accept that. So we need to make a decision. Do I want to keep the current engineers working on it now? Or do we want to move forward with it? When he gave me the price of the project and Aaron has been working closely with him, a lot of the problems that were mentioned in the order was about the collection system. I have placed a couple of calls to TDEC and have sent an email to the enforcement division asking for at least a phone meeting with them for me to discuss and know where we are on that point. So because this is so closely tied with the plant, I want to, basically I want to hear TDEC enforcement personnel tell me personally that they're not accepting it. Unfortunately, that will put us very close on time. We don't have a lot of time. We may can ask for another extension. But the proposal that GMC sent to do all that, if you have it, I think the bottom line on it was $130,000 to write that plan. And I basically, and the council wants to correct me on it and please feel free to do so. I said, I'm not sure that we can come up with that kind of funding because we have so many other things that's happening. I'm trying to get a plant built. We have other issues that we're facing. We had the pump, we had to purchase tonight. And I said, I just don't have an extra $130,000 for you to write a plan for me. And I asked him, I said, in your plan, does it give a cost estimate for the new project that would have to be okayed by TDEC for us to use? And he said there was no cost estimate. So going on the theory, if the engineering plan was $130,000, at least the cost estimate for the work would be at least $100,000. He was under the impression that he felt like Aaron could do the work, could do the, could take care of all of that. And he felt that once materials were purchased, then TDEC would accept that as going into the next phase. There's, if you can see that report, there are four phases in it. The supplemental project, the corrective action plan, the capacity management operations and maintenance program, and then an annual reporting for the next three years of '21, '22, and '23. They resubmitted a new plan to me today and it basically is for them to submit the environmental improvement project or environmental, supplemental environmental project. And the cost on that project is $15,000. I need to know from the council, do you want me to just help the engineers to give me an invoice for what they have done? Or do, we have not signed any kind of contract or anything, so they can bill me for the time that they have put into it? Or we can sign this proposal and send it to them? Or we can, you know, if you want to get someone else totally different to do that? And Penny, I guess there's some folks that she works with, thinks that they could probably do it for us, but can we get it done by April 4th? I mean, we're close on time here with it.
I think our engineer firm would have a hard time doing it in that timeframe as well.
They have been working, I think they fully expected us to sign off on the full project for them, but that's what they sent to me. And because that was the first time I'd seen any kind of estimate numbers and was asking questions about construction and what? Aaron might can shine some light on it because I know he has talked to you. He said he talked to you yesterday about some stuff?
Yes, he talked to me today and yesterday both.
Can you shine any light on what they're, because basically just other than knowing what area uptown that he's looking at, I don't know anything about the project. And like I said, I want to hear TDEC say they won't accept. You know, I don't deny what he says, I just want to hear it with my own ears that they won't accept the treatment plant. And I mean, I'm thinking $6 million and then $130,000 sounds pretty miniscule compared to that, but it's money that we don't have.
The project that we decided that we were going to try to go with is Tricia Avenue behind BP. There's the trailer park there and then there's also, once you go past the trailer park, there's three more houses on the, on that side of the road. And what the plan is, is to redo the lateral lines and all of the tanks and valves and everything on the vacuum system on that side of the road.
Do you have any idea what a cost estimate for that would be?
I have no clue. I know just the vacuum pits alone, we're looking at, right at $20,000, just in the vacuum, just the pits. And that's not installation, that's just getting the material.
Is it per pit or for all of them?
That's for all of them. There's four of them over there and that would be replacing all four of those pits. That's with us doing the labor. And then as far as the piping, I don't have a clue, honestly. I'd have to get prices on that.
Now, the question that I asked him was, is this something that we could cover under depreciation? Which is basically what you was asking about a while ago. He had no idea. So he was going to be checking on that today and trying to get back with me.
I will say he had asked me about if we would be interested in doing the project. And I will, if we have to do it. I prefer not to, just because of manpower and time already. But if we have to do it to appease the state, you know, we'll make it happen. But that's going to be a pretty good sized project. I mean, it's going to be a week, maybe two weeks worth of work if we did it ourselves.
As far as replacing the pits and things like that, that is something we've actually been discussing for months.
Right.
The lines, we haven't discussed that. So he is, basically is he saying replace all the lines?
All right, so the lateral lines, what the lateral line is. So you have your main line that goes from your station and it's the bigger line. Well then a lateral line would be like the branch off of it that goes to your pit at your house and then goes from that pit to your house. So we would actually be replacing from the house to the pit and then replace the pit and then replace from the pit to the main line. So all of that would all be new lines. So that would help with water intrusion, infiltration and things like that where the old piping from the houses and things like that have roots drilled in the joints and are busted or things like that and water's coming in them. And that's a low line area, that's why we kind of picked that. And it would, in that short distance, it would, should have a pretty good impact because there's a lot of houses right there on the system. So that's kind of what we decided on.
What's the thoughts of the council on this?
Mr. Dodger, if you hired two more people, you don't think you could do it?
Oh, I know I could do it. But is it going to take me from other things that we need to do vitally? Yes, but I know I can do it. I mean, we can do it with the guys we got now. But you know, if I just got two extra guys, yes, it would help tremendously. But it's still, it's a pretty big undertaking for just a few guys. But I can do it. I hope that would make it happen.
The supplemental environment project, that deadline is the 2nd of April. Are you going to be able to take that on?
I mean, like I said, we can make it happen.
This is right around the corner.
Yeah, we can make it happen, actually.
Okay, let me break in. That's to get it submitted to them.
Yeah, that's not.
That's not that the work has to be done by then. But we're going to get into trouble here if we're not careful. It is, when we give a date, then according to the order, okay, let's say we're going to have this completed by April 1st of next year. If we don't have that completed, there's an $800 per day fine. So we've got to make sure that the date that is put in there is acceptable to TDEC, but it's also acceptable to us. We don't need someone just willy-nilly throwing a date in there and say, oh, you can handle it by then. No, we've got an undersized crew here that's doing garbage pickup, parks, streets and everything else. We're going to be terribly busy. So that's why we've got to have a lot of input into what is being placed into these documents. And granted, I've spent a lot of time in the past two to three weeks answering questions about this and sewer plants and Aaron. And well, you remember the work study, so that's about where we are. And he's had at least two more programs thrown at you since then needing items. And we'd be great if everything that we had was on computer and it was there so that we could just pull up the screen and go to GIS and say, we've got 200 valves, we've got 500 feet of pipe and we've got six pits. But everything that we have is on paper. So and a lot of those books and pages are missing in the book, so.
Or he's got them in his head.
And you don't have any experience with doing this in the past or any type of plan like this, do you?
Not this, not this large, but we do this on a regular basis. We do this type of thing, yes, sir. We replace the lines and pits and you know, on a fairly regular basis.
Well, I'm talking about just the plans, putting, you know, the scope of services that they're talking about?
No, as far as doing the plans and things, no, sir.
Mayor, where would the money come? I'm sorry, go ahead, Mr. Lee.
The engineer firm would be doing the plans as well, if they're ready.
That's what I'm asking now, is basically do you want an engineering firm to do the plans? Or do you want me to look outside of the engineering firms at possibly some smaller companies that might would do this? Obviously, we do not have anyone inside the city that could dedicate the time and talent that it's going to take to get these plans to TDEC in this amount of time. So and it may be where they went in and broke apart the four parts to, into four sections and it was presented that way. It may be that we could do one section of it at a time and proceed from there. I mean, the new proposal that they sent out today was for $15,000 for the first task and that was to write the scope of services for the supplemental environmental project. And the cost on that is $15,000.
Looks like to me our factory just the law will give this thing submitted by April 12. I don't think anybody else can do that.
Yeah, and here's the cold hard facts about it. We could pay the fine and that would take care of the fine that we presently have. But what I suspect that will happen is they would take your fine funds and then they would issue another order ordering you to get this work done. And at that point, then you're not only paying the fine. And at that point, then you're not only paying the fines, then you're paying to get the work done also. With this plan being presented, if they accept it, at least ways it is going for a plan and it's not just being thrown out on the table and given to them like you'd hand it to a cashier at the restaurant. Does that make any sense?
Where would the money be coming from?
It would have to come out of the sewer fund. It would be a sewer project, so it would have to come from the sewer fund. And that's where I am. That's why I wanted to talk to TDEC officials myself. You know, we're trying to get a, we're trying to run a dilapidated plant that should have been torn down 10 years ago. And we're trying to keep it running, which is very expensive. And we're trying to do all the things that we need to do to build a new plant. And, I mean, it's pretty overwhelming to be honest about it.
So we could proceed forward with an SEP and meet the deadline and be okay? And then revisit the other items?
But it would be the plan, and that's the reason I was asking Aaron to speak on it. Whatever we do, whatever this plan is, is what we would have to follow through. And I want to make sure that this is a plan that's acceptable to Aaron because he's the one that's responsible for these collection lines.
And we're certain that that suggested plan would be something that they would accept at this point?
He thinks they would.
Because I know we've done that in the past and then they said, nope, sorry. And we've spent the money and they said, sorry, it didn't qualify.
And, but that's why I'm bringing it up here tonight, so we can discuss this. This is a hard decisions that you have to make, that you, you know, of how do you move forward. And keep in mind, this is just one area of the city. But there again, we've got to get this treatment plant built. And it really surprised me when Logan said that TDEC would not accept that as a project because it wasn't, this all started in 2014. The order goes back and tells us about it. So we, you know, but they were gonna find us a hefty amount in 2016, 17. And because of the plant, like I said, it got put on hold. But now we're bidding the plan and they're moving ahead with what they've got to do too. Of course, that's what they're, that is their purpose and their goal is to make sure that we have good, clean drinking water and we dispose of our wastewater in ways that is acceptable to the environment.
Is Mr. Logan not available?
No, I don't know if he was on the iPad, but they're completely gone now.
Well, I want to say that I feel like it's unacceptable that Mr. Logan and the firm is not on Zoom where we can ask questions tonight. Because I feel like they should be accessible to the council and the mayor and Aaron.
If they're making this kind of proposal.
If we're making this kind of proposal and wanting us to make a decision this way. So I will be giving them a call tomorrow.
If we don't have this plan submitted by April 4th, 5th, what's the penalty?
Honestly, Councilman Lee, I don't know. Do you have your copy of the consent order there?
Well, I was looking for it. I couldn't find it. I probably, I know I printed it, but I don't know where I got it. Well, my thinking is there, and I don't know if that's possible. If, I don't want to spend that hundred some thousand dollars for this engineer and company that I feel like has put us in this situation already. My thinking is if we just don't meet that deadline, then TDEC will set another deadline for us and that'd give us time to get somebody else to draw this up for us at a cheaper rate.
Well, if I could get TDEC to, if I could ever have a conversation with them and ask them what I needed to do to ask for another extension, I can do that on the phone. Like I said, if you, if you find your order on page four of it under section 12, it tells for parameters for the exceedances that we have. And honestly, I feel that a lot of it is plant related. So there, again, I want to hear it come out of their mouth that they're not gonna accept it. I mean, I can accept they don't want to accept it, but I want to hear it.
I don't want anybody else to, but I'm not gonna make a motion to do this right here.
Okay, you can even make a motion that been on the agenda?
Well, it's basically tied in with the sewer plant. So that's, you know, so of course, they sent this all to me for me to sign off on it. And I told them, I said, I'm not signing a contract. I'm not signing off on this until I have more information. And basically, the one that they sent today that you have here is they're saying that if we don't get this to them tonight, then we are probably in danger of missing that April 2nd date.
So if we had to, we do have another week to where we could do a special call and get this information, but that's putting them on a deadline. That's unacceptable.
Well, all we can do is is try and forge ahead with the information that we have. I really thought that was him on the call, walked away or something.
They zoomed in at the last meeting, so they know how to do it. They had the links and everything you provided, right? Can you maybe take a 10 minute break and try to contact them? Because it is important that they give us this information.
Let's do that. It's 8 o'clock. We'll take a five minute break, 10 minute break and see if we can get in touch with them and
I think it's 9 o'clock. Somebody's changing clock.
Oh, okay. Well, I tell you what, you, you want to just give me the okay to go ahead and try to get this stuff worked out and communicate with the council as to what we're gonna do? And if we need to call a special call meeting, I'll call one.
That way you can act on it in the next day or so.
I think that's a great choice.
Because, I mean, you know, I'm waiting for TDEC to call me back and I really need to talk to them before we move forward and decide anything.
Well, I'll make the motion that we allow the mayor to take care of this matter.
I'll please have a second.
Discussion? Miscussion?
Wilkerson? Yes. Brown?
Yes.
Lee?
Yes.
Heads?
Yes.
Tom?
Yes. Can y'all hear us better tonight?
I can, yes.
We're tied into the speaker from the same link.
And actually,
It's much better, volume is probably much better.
If the, if the volume needs to go up more, she has a whole control panel here that she can crank you up louder in here. She can crank us up louder there. But it's good to hear it's better.
It's much better, yes.
Okay, but the last item on the agenda for us to discuss, and we've been talking about this for quite a while, is the H&R Resource Resolution. As we've discussed in meetings past, we've lost our area to be able to dispose of sludge. We had two areas and one was privately owned and we were asked not to come back out there anymore. And it was strictly due to coronavirus. It wasn't anything that was fault of the city or anything. It was just because of dangers of coronavirus. And we honored that gentleman's wishes. Unfortunately, we have to come up with a way to dispose of sludge. And if we don't, then we're gonna be shutting a digester down. And when the digester goes down, plant pretty much go down. So thereby it pretty much renders the plant in a non-use basis. It's just a big storage holding tank. There's a couple of options. We've looked at some sludge presses. We've looked at different forms. I have started the process of getting the necessary permits. We, with the current land use, solage, what's that permit called, Chris? It's land use solage.
Land appliance.
Appliance. And TDEC issues that and we are trying to utilize all that we can with that. And that's what has kept us out of trouble so far. I'm knocking on some wood there. Chris and Thomas and Penny and, what's her assistant's name?
Dan.
Dan have all been working together to try to make this thing come together and work. There's only one company that is in this area. It's a company that Portland uses. I think Parkville may have used them a time or two. Lebanon may use them. They're the only local company that will come and what they call press the sludge. And what they do is press all the moisture content out of it, recycle it back through our waste tanks and retreat that. But it takes, it removes all of the solids. And with that permit, it can be trucked to the landfill and disposed of like ordinary house waste. So, but he offered to let us do that at, is it .75 cents? Well, we've got two parts of it here. .75 for pressing and a .20 for them trucking it to the landfill for us. We looked at possibly trying to find our own trucks to haul it out there. We had a gentleman that was actually even willing to take it and dispose of it, but he only had one truck. And he said, my problem will be if my truck breaks down, where does that leave you? Because you've got these people and they're working, but it's estimated two 10 hour days to run through our tank and filter this. So, we asked them about it and they said, we have trucks that we can actually truck it with as a .095 cents per gallon is the way they do it. We did not have anyone that came to bid on doing the electrical work for us to have them connect. Fortunately for us, when we called them and told them that, and Chris is handling all of his negotiations and all with them, told them we didn't have 480 volt electricity out there to run their press. And they said that they actually had a generator that was capable of doing that. And the proposal shows their rental fee, their time for setup and tearing down. And because this is considered somewhat of an emergency basis, I think this is something that we need to move forward with and do. We could take a chance, I guess. If this needs to be quoted and sent out for sale bids, we might could get by, we might not could. Like I said, when that digester gets full to the point, we shut the plant down. So I'm considering it an emergency. The other nearest company that we found that does this kind of process is in Ohio. So this one is just up the road, pretty close by in Kentucky, what, Pecan Hills?
Fortale, Kentucky.
Okay, and what we will try to negotiate, if we try this for for a time and it works well, or maybe even twice, they've asked me to do a one year agreement with them for this price. But my proposal back to them was, when they come to Portland, could they go ahead and get ours while they were in Portland and try to knock that price down? Actually, from last year when they first made a proposal for us, it's dropped quite a bit in setup time. The cost of it per gallon, I think, was the same, but their setup fees and all dropped a little bit. And you have a complete breakdown of it. And I just wanted to find out if you wanted to vote on that or if you wanted me to sign the proposal and move forward with it. You know, we don't have a big choice on it. Chris, I'll let you speak to it just a moment here. Chris is our director out at the wastewater treatment plant and he can tell you more about it and I hope to.
And today we was at roughly 65% capacity. We're down to one area that we can haul to, and that's Saddle Club. Myself and Dan sat down last Friday and figured out how many loads we could take out there per day and stay in compliance with the state. And that was roughly two, maybe three loads if it was a real, real dry season.
We're not there yet.
We gotta get to dry season.
At one spot, she's not gonna handle it.
Yeah, and that's what scares me the most, man, the death of it. And you got to remember, you're taking, what is it, a 5,000 pound tanker out there. I mean, a gallon tanker. When you get in mud fields like we're got right now, a lot of times you don't come out of them.
I'm sorry.
I'm sorry.
No. Mr. Mayor, did they tell you or Mr. Chris when they could get to us since we're at 60? Do they know we're at 65?
I haven't spoken to them in over a month.
They said this proposal was sent February 18th. And honestly, I thought I was gonna have to do an emergency call meeting for us to get them out here. I couldn't believe that Thomas was able to get the truck out this week and get it down there because it was, well, when they did this proposal, it was full.
Yeah, we actually hauled eight loads last week out there, two per day. We didn't want to exceed the capacity of the land. And we also, with the pump we have down there, we was able to do what's called de-water or decant. And what that says, we turn the air off, but the solid still above and pull the superdye off the top, which clears water. We put that through the headworks to retrieve it. We was actually able to pull it down. We were around 60% after we hauled eight loads and de-watered.
How often will they have to go through us?
It's estimated two times a year for two days, 10 hours each day.
I see we got, once again, got no choice to get this done.
And there, again, if, if this is, uh, if it is authorized, this proposal, this signed via, the, the funds for it would have to come out of, uh, out of our reserve fund because there's, uh, no line item in our current budget for this, so when we do the budget amendment, that's, uh, that's where we would need to, we need to add that in.
I'll make a motion that we accept the H&R Resource Management proposal for a period of one year, like their proposal says and, and because this is something that we can take to the new plan, we'll have to take to the new plan.
Well, and you're correct, this, this, uh, this is something that's gonna be ongoing unless we buy the equipment, start doing it ourselves.
I, Felicia, second.
Have a motion by Councilman, Smalling, a second, by Councilwoman Head to accept a proposal from H&R Resource Management. Any more discussion? And that is with the, uh, with the intent that it will come out of our, uh, re- reserve fund, so. Anything else? Ms. Keisha, your turn.
Brown?
Yes.
Lee?
Yes.
Wilkerson?
Yes.
Ed?
Yes.
Smalley?
Yes.
Let Verrickit reflect that it is a unanimous decision. That is everything that is on the agenda tonight. If I have a motion in a second, we will adjourn.
This will be true.
We stand adjourned.